Where'd he go? He left.
He's right here.
He left. You didn't get sworn in?
Well, now, he's not.
Are you speaking? Do you, do the firm swear that you're gonna tell the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Well, I just read this case. Now, this is a pre-planning review meeting, I think. Uh, would you have something, a presentation or anything you'd like to make or plans for us to see or anything?
Well, yeah, and, and we had presented the plans to the last meeting, too, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
Is that done there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have copies here of... This is basically what we had showed you guys before. Um, this is the subdivision. Did you have the, come here, little copy of this? Do they have that here?
This is what we have here.
Okay, there we go. You got it.
We have, uh, money.
Should I need a check?
Do one of the plans in there? Is that what you wanted?
Yeah. I guess this is what you guys are gonna wanna see, right?
Right.
You want your own copy, Harry?
No, it's okay, I can watch.
And this is, you know, what we had submitted to Steve and went down through and included everything that was on the, uh, on the list of us to hand in for today's meeting.
First Street has no recorded width?
Hmm.
That's what it says here. Is it, do you know if it was, at any time was a township road? Is that, those are just all maintained as township roads in the planes, aren't they?
Yeah.
All the individual streets?
Yeah.
Is there a set standard, Bob, on a width of the township road there?
Forty feet is typical, but it, it varies somewhere, so we follow that separate with the county engineer to see they have some records.
Yeah, evidently, they're saying the surveyor didn't find any record of width of First Street.
Well, when, when I worked for RG, we would fall back on forty foot width then, and there was no record.
Okay, I was just curious. 'Cause...
That's why I came today, I thought there might be.
Right, your Castle Run will be, what, forty with, with feet width then?
It's actually right here. Yeah, fifty. Okay.
I don't know what's all in the file, but I guess one of the things we talked about last time was there was this laundry list of people to get closure from, like Plains Water and Sewer District.
Yeah, letters, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I did get that.
They reviewed the plans and have accepted it or recommend approval.
Yes, sir.
The fire department, I guess, out there.
Yes, sir.
What else do we, the county engineer, probably will have to look at it for the street, or the town, will the township trustees maintain that?
From what I understood, it was the township trustees, yeah.
And this is in Athens Township, right?
Yes, sir.
Will, will the street be turned over to the public?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Because that, that's a process that really involves trustees and...
Right, yeah, and, and that was the letter that we got said that, you know, that would, as long as I did everything that was approved by you guys, they would take that over. And the fire department, we got a letter from them stating that, and Rich Kessler from the Plains Water and Sewer also gave us the letter.
Have you seen these as a county plan?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Look over your shoulder, you know, for me.
No, I don't mind. But some of these that are in the three mile that we don't have any intent. And everything that we know of.
Yeah.
Is the, is the right-of-way fifteen? If somebody stopped in, or if you're, so if you get, um, subdivision, you're like, you have a street standard.
Yeah, this is Jim Berry, is he Philly?
Philly.
Yeah, he's an engineer, Jim. They work together with the other one, Jim Watkins.
And, you know, there may be some details that the county engineer will wanna, um, discuss, like the, the turnaround here, the dimensions on that. You know, normally, we have a cul-de-sac at the end unless it's gonna be a temporary deal, so, you know, that may have to be discussed. So, there'll be details that need to be worked out.
Right.
I see this as preliminary, so...
Right, yeah, the, the, both the fire department and the Athens trustees, um, did approve the turnaround. You know, actually, it was suggested to me, actually, from, by the Athens trustees.
Well, this is, well, this is where we, we get into some interesting issues, though, because the trustees ultimately don't say what, the county engineer and the commissioners say what the design's gotta be.
Okay.
Um, and the trustees, they don't really keep up on that stuff. They'd be happy with that, probably. That's better than a lot of what they have. We do have, we do have standards that we go by for that. And how many individual lots? If, I mean, some of this is probably obvious.
Fifteen, fifteen individual, individual lots, and there'll be thirty total units, duplexes.
Okay.
Single-story.
But their goal is to sell them?
Yes, sir.
As individual, or in a city, that would then be a common lot line and would have trigger variances, a side yard, and a whole bunch of other things, but you don't have that out there. In our, our, you know, what Steve had asked me at one time as a question was, we need to show this all to the county officials that are really going to, the township that are gonna administer it. Should we make up a list of, well, if it had, had it been in the city, this, the variances that would've had to have been attached, just so that that might be part of the file, because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future.
So, at this point, though, you're just treating it as a, as a subdivision since they're gonna sell the lots?
That was my understanding.
Well, are you gonna build then sell?
Yes, sir.
Or you, yeah, 'cause you'd almost have to, it's a common duplex and everything.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna build them all.
Right.
I hope so anyways.
Phasing, or?
I know all that at once. Well, I mean, I'll, it'll all, the development will all be done, and then I will build as I sell.
Right. So, everybody's the first one to see country trucks for a long time.
No, I'll have all the roads done and everything.
And sidewalks?
Um, we're gonna curb it and run the grass up to the curb.
That's not a sidewalk. Is it?
No, ma'am.
Plains need sidewalks. They have them on the main street. And they don't have them on Fourth Street, and I know that's a problem. We had, did we put them in out there at the housing authority? Does anybody remember?
I don't remember. Seems to me we've asked for them in a lot of places where we haven't got them. If somebody wants to buy the two, the two lots and have you build a duplex as a single house, you won't do that, or you would do that?
That's my understanding.
I am going to, um, keep with the same model and, and...
No matter what?
And basically, um, you know, make some color coordination differences, but, um, I would like everybody to kind of follow the same structure and the same look. You know, I'm gonna do some stone on the front of them, and, uh, yeah, I would like to try to keep everything looking, you know, basically the same. And I think that'll make everything look nice and uniform.
Would especially look nice with sidewalks.
Yeah, I, I'm still taking that into consideration.
I mean, you could put in a sidewalk all the way around. All, all at the same time.
Right.
It just, it seems to me that, um, smaller units like this are likely to have smaller kids.
What is it saying here? You, something like you have a deed restriction of no more than three people, is that right?
Yeah, that is a deed restriction, yeah.
I forget what you said, the size of inside, how many rooms are in these things? Two bedrooms?
Yeah, it's, well, it's not in here that deed restrictions are in here. Um, they are, yeah, they are, but what it is, is it's a two bedrooms, and then the master bedroom has a sitting room off the side, it's about ten by ten room. So, somebody has the option of making that a bedroom if they would want, or, you know, maybe a little exercise room or a sitting room. So, that is an option for somebody.
Are these two-story?
No, they're single-story.
In your, I don't know if you're calling it deed restrictions or what, but since you have a common wall, a common driveway almost, you know, what, what are you gonna build in for automatic dispute, dispute resolutions? Like driveway needs replaced, or the roof needs...
Yeah, they're, they're in the deed restrictions.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Yeah, I've tried to take in all the considerations of such.
If I could get a copy of that, Joey, Tony, that would...
Now, who, who do you expect to enforce the deed restrictions? Out of curiosity?
Well, you know, for me as a developer, I will do it now, and then, um, hopefully, we'll form a homeowner's association, you know?
But that's not in the deed restriction, then?
I'm sorry?
But that's not in the deed.
I do have mention of a homeowner's association in there.
Do you? It's three pages, I haven't read it all.
Street lighting?
Yes.
Yes, how?
Yeah, each, um, unit will be required to have a street light, and they will all be uniform, all will be the same. So, each house will have a street light.
So, you'll have, you'll have two here, or, or?
There would be one.
Building.
Yeah, each building will have a street light. I think that's, provide plenty of lighting there.
Is that a light on the building, Tony?
No, no, it'll be out, and it's a street light.
That may be even more than what's really needed there, if everyone has a street light, but...
I think it'll look nice.
And whose utilities will it be hooked to?
Well, that would be, you know, the responsibility of the tenant.
I, yeah, but if you're gonna have two tenants and one light...
Yeah, that'd be a shared responsibility.
Um, see, I don't have any other questions.
Well, I guess that's why I'm here, you know, to, you know, talk about this kind of stuff with you.
Well, when you say a street light, do you mean a street light or with those little lamps that people have in front of their houses?
Yeah, a street light out front, you know, a pole light, usually averaged eight to ten feet high, and then a pole light on top of it.
Not just one of those little things that people have in their yards, something with a little gas light?
Well, I'm not sure what you're referring to, but...
Well, a street light is a big thing you put out in the street.
Yeah, no, it would be a street light.
A light in front of a house, lots of people, if you go into subdivisions, have lights in front of their houses, they'll have a carriage lamp type thing with a little, not a bright light, but a light.
Right, yeah.
So, you're talking about which?
I will specify the light that will, you know, I'll pick one out that I think is adequate for the, for the roads and lighting, and, you know, that will be what I will have everybody put in front of the house.
Well, I still don't know which kind to mean. Because the bigger, bigger ones are different prices and look different, you have light reflecting different ways, and...
Right.
One in front of every house might be too much light, if it's a real street light, big street light.
Well, that would be, I guess, something to put in your plans, you know, I mean, this is just preliminary now.
Right.
Put a detail of the street light.
Okay.
In, in your final plan, you know?
I'm not a big fan of shared, shared walls and driveways and things, but it's my own personal choice, I think, you know, and sometimes it's, can create problems.
Are these gonna have garages, are there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where, so the garage will be this bump that's sticking out in front here?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, right there.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't bring some plans with me this time.
We had a drawing last time, we think you'd have drawings last time. There isn't anything in here on it, but there was the drawing of the concept, I think, and...
I couldn't figure out how they backed up on those, uh, houses, those public houses, the individual that they're over, they're in here, come down here, and they're in there.
Tony, where, where does this sit in relation to that Indian mound that's out there?
Okay, yeah, okay, I think the Indian mound would be over right in this area, right here, Bob. Right here, 'cause this is, uh, the Abdella property, and, uh...
That's where the house, the, the house that was just fixed up is at?
Yes, sir, yeah.
And then that...
I think he put those two duplexes right here, didn't he? And then the, the Indian mound was just like right here or so. I'm pretty sure.
I think when I asked about last time, I think that's mound, about where you said it was.
Yeah.
Or if he, if he, see, that, that's showing Hamlin, they might be actually over here, Tony.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, so I guess then that would be in relation to, it'd be right in here.
But, uh... I'm just getting my bearings.
Yeah.
I can't hardly, I'm figuring, figuring myself out here.
I'm out there a lot.
I know you are, but I go to those, those things, you know, I used to go to those nursing homes, but those individual, uh, metropolitan housing units, and I can't get in my head quite where all this is, so...
Yeah, well, those individual units are, are back here.
In here.
Yeah. Up of what would probably be Second Street or Third.
Second or Third, I think they kinda go between them, aren't they?
Individual units are back this way.
Now, this area in between, this is all the common ownership?
Because you can see them from here, you can see them from here.
But that's a common ownership. Should we lot number that?
Actually, I think there'll be an easement right through there. That'd be an easement right there for Rich, for Rich Kessler.
Um, either that or owned by, you know, the association.
Well, he's got it down to be owned by the association.
Right, right.
I mean, as long as, it, it can be commonly owned, but there's gotta be an owner.
To me, I think you have to have a lot number, don't you? Wouldn't you?
Hmm, I don't think so, Rick, I don't think easements or common ownership necessarily needs to be a lot.
Okay.
Well, how have they done that in, you know, in other subdivisions you guys have approved here in the city level with the easements and stuff?
I think most of them have had a lot number, but it doesn't, it's the county's call on that. But it almost looks to be like six A would be this whole lot, because there is, because you've got this right-of, easement line here. And there's an easement, like, back there?
Yeah, for electric pumping.
See, I think in the past, what we've done where they haven't been so wide, they have just been part of an existing lot, they weren't, they weren't numbered separately, Rick, but they, the easement...
Well, this could be part of six A.
Part of the existing lot, right, and then just to...
And then those lots are granting the easement.
Right.
But with something as big as this, with a detention basin and other things going on, they may not, you know, wanna own it, those, those lots. We can, we can do a little research on that.
Okay.
I wouldn't think they'd wanna own that one.
I wouldn't either, yeah.
Normally, it's just a drainage ditch or a swale, and, you know, it just goes with that lot, and it's not a big deal. But here, there's a basin and other structures even.
It's a bigger slope there. From here to here goes nine feet. Is that a twelve up through here?
It's, it's not super steep, I mean...
No, it's not.
Yeah, it'd be under ten, ten percent.
Pretty flat site over there, actually, yeah.
It sort of goes, and that goes down in there, though, doesn't it, when you go into where the...
Yes, ma'am.
You know, where the houses...
Yeah, 'cause this is somewhere the drive to, to, to...
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
It's not gonna be a pond or anything, it's just there to modify the road runoff so that it slows it down over time.
That is correct, yeah, that, that's what we've, we had talked about, too, was, you know, it, it will probably be dry most of the time, but, you know, for any excess water, like you, you know, alluded to, you know...
'Cause I would assume most of your slope drainage of the...
Yes, sir, yeah, for the roads.
All coming back to here, and then there's most of these houses draining out to the road?
Yeah, well, it'll be going in storm sewers, we'll have storm sewers here, and then the storm sewers will all drop in there. And all the gutter drains will be, you know, going into storm sewers.
What's this common area back here?
That's just a reference to this, I think.
Oh, refers up to there?
This is just a reference up here, isn't it?
I would say yes to that.
'Cause yours...
That common area is actually in the Cade subdivision.
It's up here, that's a different subdivision, right?
Yes.
It's part of this over here.
And I think somewhere in there, we are supposed to reference each common area, you know, outside of what we're doing.
So, is that Cade subdivision, is that the, is that Department Housing Authority's?
I think it is.
I think it is.
I think that's a name, but I, you know, we haven't used that name on it, we always go with something else.
I think, I think that's, that's what they are.
So, this would be their common area, we do have common area in there. Here, and the houses are that way, a couple of places, if they're down this way. Here's Third Street.
What, what size water line were you putting up in there, Tony?
What size?
Six inch back for the fire, I recommend three inch for the fire, I reckon, to the end of the street. I feel like a vulture here.
Well, it's good you're here, so we can, you know, get the input.
Right, I figured some issues had come up, so... Here, oh, sorry, here it says, an existing eighteen-inch sewer in Front Street, is that the First Street?
Yeah, it should be First.
First Street, okay.
Tygo there.
No problem. Just wanted to make sure I'm not confused.
You didn't know about Front Street there, did you?
I'm sorry, what were you asking?
I was gonna ask, is there another common area for this, beside this? You can't really count this since that belongs to the Cade subdivision.
No.
So, this is the only com, common area?
Yeah, I mean, it will be, you know, this, this area up in here will be a landscaped area, you know, it's coming in. You know, I think we've allowed for, I think, twenty-five to thirty feet, I think it's thirty feet, so that would be, you know, part of a common area.
But are you gonna describe this separately, so that it's not part of these two lots?
Yes, yeah, I mean, that's what we were talking about, and Bob was gonna find out, you know, how that had been done in the past, through other subdivisions that you guys have approved.
Right now, it's just vacant land, there's no utilities or anything, right?
Yeah, you don't need on it, Rick.
Okay.
Flat piece of land.
This is what I, pre-planning, is this what this is?
Well, I, we thought we, I thought we did.
We had a, what would it be last time?
We did reconsider this.
And upon, on the agenda, it says pre-plan review.
Um, my name's Steve Pearson, I'm the zoning administrator for the City of Athens, Ohio. Uh, the reason I had this item placed on the agenda was for the commission to set a date for a public hearing. Uh, it was my, not my intention to have any review today. Uh, Mr. Farron had asked if he could attend and present additional information, and that's what he's done.
We can't vote on a b even preliminary without a hearing, right?
Right. Um, at the last meeting, uh, Mr. Farron had his pre-application meeting that's required, uh, the next thing to do is apply for preliminary plan approval. He provided all the information required, um, under section twenty-one oh-three oh-nine, including a check for fourteen hundred dollars, five hundred dollars for the entire review, and thirty dollars per lot. The next thing that has to happen is, um, actually, twenty-one oh-three-ten says, a preliminary plan shall be considered officially filed after examined by the zoning administrator, um, and found to be in compliance with the application requirements, and that's why I had it placed on the agenda. Um, that's why you have, I have copies, um, the exact copies that you have over at my office. Uh, twenty-one oh-three-eleven says, the planning commission, prior to acting on a preliminary plan, shall hold a public hearing. Now, I had asked the law director a question related to the second part of this requirement, uh, my email is, and a lot of people in the city has disappeared, so I don't have a record of it. Mr. Hunter gave me an answer, but I can't remember what it was, but anyway, here's the problem. Um, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing at such time and upon such notice, as the planning commission may designate in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code. Well, I'm not sure what part of the Ohio Revised Code to go to, to find out, do you notify adjoining property owners, is it fourteen days in advance, one month in advance, advertise in the newspaper? Um, but in any case, the next section says that the planning commission shall act on the plan no later than forty-five days after it's accepted as being filed. So, it couldn't be a thirty-day notice. And given that there's nothing specific there about when you wanna hold the hearing, who you wanna notify, how you wanna advertise it, that's the main reason that I had it placed on the agenda for today, just to set the time and the place and the notification requirements for the public hearing. Um, additionally, and I still think it's good that, you know, Tony made a little presentation, because one of the requirements for preliminary application includes other information, impact studies, items or provisions deemed necessary for prudent... for prudent, that are prudent to create buildable sites and promote public health, safety and welfare. And, you know, I'm just going to assume that's in the opinion of the planning commission. So those kinds of items we've talked about that relate to public welfare, health and safety. I can give you, for example, two, and the mayor and I had talked about this. There will be, even though essentially you're going to be asking for those who will maintain the public infrastructure, you know, for their input and approval, there will be a laundry list of variances that will be required. For example, there's a proposal for a forty-foot wide right-of-way. The city requires fifty feet. Um, I'm not sure what the setback was on the houses, but the subdivision regulations set a front setback requirement of thirty feet. There's some lot coverage things that will need variances too. But you've got to remember, the regulations that we're going by apply to the city, but also out three miles where obviously the development is in no way similar in those two jurisdictions. So there will be a long laundry list. Uh, there'll be, there will be a, there'll have to be a variance for, uh, the type of turnaround on the end of the cul-de-sac. Even if the commissioners like, I mean, the engineer likes it or the fire department likes it, uh, our requirements are for eighty feet of pavement on a hundred-foot cul-de-sac. So again, there, as the mayor mentioned, there'll be this very long list of variances. So that's why I had it placed.
But first, we need to have a hearing because.
You have to decide what, yeah, who you want to notify and when you want to have.
For the preliminary approval, we have to have that? I know we have to for the final.
This is just a public hearing.
Oh, okay, it's a public hearing.
Uh, the planning commission, prior to acting on a preliminary plan for a subdivision, shall hold a public hearing. Then what happens after that is. Essentially, it's just a notice to the public that preliminary information has been received. Let me see. Um, no, there's no other public hearing. What happens, um, there's some information here. There's additional information required for filing of a final plat application. See, before any final plat is approved, the planning commission shall act on an application within forty-five days unless extended by agreement with the developer. Uh, if it's disapproved, correction letter to be sent within thirty days. And then your recommendation is forwarded to council. So this is the public hearing. I think it's a little different. The, the reason that, yeah, actually, I'm reading through it too. This is the first time I think that we've done a, since University of State's done a subdivision outside of town. We've been doing planned unit developments in town. My recollection is that the public hearing is between preliminary and final. In this case, the public hearing for a subdivision is before preliminary.
Which section are you in on that? Twenty-one oh-three.
Twenty-one oh-three. Twenty-one oh-three oh-nine preliminary plan requirements.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then going on from there, uh, talks about the procedure. Now. Boy, I'm not sure now about, you forward a recommendation to council. Not sure if those sections have been, have been modified or not. Regulations actually say, then your recommendation, uh, the final plat submitted to the clerk of council, um, fourteen days prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting of council with copies of the final plat that were submitted to the commission. Council will consider the subdivision's next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time it will be introduced as an ordinance. For first reading at that meeting, after its passage, it will be signed with the president of council and returned to the subdivider. I'm not sure if that's, if that section's been amended or not to include a public hearing.
Didn't look to me like the public hearing was required on the preliminary, but it was on the final. We were to send letters to the appropriate officials in this case.
Yeah, I'm just reading from ordinance oh-one-hundred-oh-four, passed November first, two thousand four.
Okay, I was just looking at the code that Gary did.
Let me see, I've got a bunch of revisions back here. Maybe Ms. Phillips could help.
Is that surface real and changes?
Okay, there has been a change to twenty-one oh-three one-six. The planning commission shall hold a public hearing after submission of the final plan, if practicable, is what it says now. Hold on just a minute. Three. Here, I thought I was all prepared for this. Twenty-one oh-three sixteen.
Is that what it said?
Eighteen page.
Rick has the news saying it was supposed to be all up to date.
Well, but that's through two thousand four.
Four, so anything after that?
Well, I think Steve has it.
I've got it right here. Um, it had, okay, we don't have to worry about the public hearing. It does describe it here. Advertising one or more newspapers to general circulation. This is ordinance oh-fifty-five oh-five, passed July fifth, two thousand five, just less than a year ago. Fifteen days, so we've got to go without a, an additional scheduled meeting. You could hold a public hearing a month. Will be, let's see, next meeting's on the first, next meeting's the fifteenth, today's the seventeenth. Okay, we can schedule it for the meeting on the fifteenth.
And that would be the going to the public hearing?
That would be the public hearing required before consideration of a preliminary approval. Also, letters to be sent to all property owners within five hundred feet. If the number of property owners exceeds ten, the notice of the hearing published in the newspaper shall suffice. And I don't see anything where a public hearing. I still don't see anything where a public hearing is required at the council level.
Okay, so we have a public hearing on this on the fifteenth of June, right?
Right, it has to be advertised.
It has to be advertised.
Advertise in the newspaper, um, at least fifteen days in advance.
So it has to be, uh, pretty soon.
So again, notice, individual notice will go to all property owners within five hundred feet unless the total number of persons within five hundred feet is, um, greater, yeah, greater than ten, then it just goes in the newspaper. And again, as I'm looking through, uh. And again, I apologize because this is the first subdivision we've done since these changes. We also have changes from council dated February sixth, two thousand six, which are very recent. And that's ordinance oh-oh-eight oh-six. What I can get off the city website or what's available to me is only good through December thirty-first, two, uh, two thousand five. So that's why I've got. The law director's office only updates the information, um, on occasion. So, and for example, anytime that I have to, um, mail or transmit to developers or any other interested person different regulations. If I have fairly recent changes, not only do I have to send them a copy of what's published, but also just a copy of, of the actual council ordinance that amended a certain section. Oh, that's pretty good. I did catch the one where, uh, one of the things they changed in February was it specified that, um, it was five hundred dollars plus thirty dollars per lot. Word lot was put in. For PUDs, the word unit was put in. Or building unit, so. That's clarified now.
Say, all we have to do here is that's public hearing is scheduled for that day, the next. Not the next meeting, but the one after that, the eighteenth, what did we say? Fifteenth, fifteenth June, so.
And again, I'll do a review for some of the things that I see are pretty obvious that require variance. You know, I don't know how much time we really want to have. I mean, this is up to the mayor and we've had these discussions before. How much time do we want to have city staff spend on projects outside the city which are not, you know, going to imminently be annexed? We spend a lot of time on University of States as city staff. But on projects like this.
I wouldn't think they're going to want to annex soon.
We want to do. But again, I'll give you, I'll give you some of the basic things like right-of-way width, maybe street construction, setbacks, lot coverage. But there's a lot of things that we would normally look at in town that don't apply there because there's no zoning. There's no land use regulations for the type of use in the structure. You can build basically any kind of structure you want, put any kind of use in that structure. So it'll just be variances from subdivision regulations. There won't be any zoning considerations.
Okay. Okay, do you have any questions?
No, I'm, I think if I do, I'll call Steve.
We'll call you.
I appreciate it.
This is, to be honest with you, this is a pretty common conversation I have with developers all the time.
Yes, Steve's been most helpful to me.
It's not unfortunate that we have to kind of put it out right on television like that, but as regulations change, and they do quite often, to be honest with you, it's hard to keep up with, especially when there's not an actual published document.
Well, I was misled a little bit here because it said a pre-plan and I, I, I thought we'd had a pre-planning, so I mean.
Right, well, what had happened was I'd gotten hold of Melissa and said, we need to schedule a public hearing. Now I guess I already know how we could have scheduled it. But in any case, that public hearing is required before consideration of preliminary. I don't know why it's so much different than a planned unit development. Because planned unit development additionally has a public hearing required at the council level. Where from what I'm looking at here, under these newer regulations, there's no, there's no public hearing required at the council level for the, uh, for a subdivision. However, I'm sure that council could call a public hearing if they wanted to. I mean, it's always permissive. Even though it's not required, doesn't mean that they, they may not do that. So I don't want anybody to, you know, to think that it would never happen at the council level for a subdivision. It would be their option.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you all for spending the time on this with us. Uh, if there are any other questions, we'll go to the next case, which is, um, oh-six oh-seven landmark rezoning issue decision. Okay.
Yeah, we had the public hearing on that.
Last time.
Couple of weeks ago. And this is the only M left, I think, other than the, where the old railroad tracks were, other than, where Sun Power and Mole Machine and those things are down on Elliott Street, and actually in the back of Elliott. So it's now on, either surrounded by R-three or in, or on Stimson Avenue B-three, uh, through this project area. My, it would be my inclination to, uh, rezone it, recommend a rezoning to R-three from the M.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on that? Uh, we did try to do this once before to change those, uh, many of those Ms. down there into R-three and, uh, didn't go that time, but seemed, doesn't seem sensible to have a manufacturing stuck in the middle.
Put in the middle.
And it was, historically, it made sense, but it's one of those things that should have been cleared up a long time ago, but it wasn't. Uh, does anybody else have a comment on it? Not, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's, we recommend R-three. Next thing is a communication from, um, it's from Muriel Brim, and I think this, the South Side Neighbor Association, actually. Uh, oh, South Side Community Association, they call theirs. And it is, uh, expresses their concern about the size of the landmark project and, uh, they feel that they're not opposed to having, having, uh, multi-unit housing, but they feel that that is, uh, much too large for there and would like to see it cut in half and, um, the garage made smaller too. We'll put this in the record for the landmark project proposal. Are there any other announcements or business? Okay, any citizen wish to speak about items not, I knew you were going to put your hand up. I should have said, Ed, are you ready to speak?
He didn't swear, did he?
This may be moot, but since you've accepted the South Side.
Near North Side, near East Side. Well, that's called the Neighbor Association, so agree on this.
Edward Baum, twenty Sunny Side Drive. I'm here and my chair is co, my capacity is co-chair of the Near East Side Neighbor Association. We had a meeting on Tuesday night to discuss the landmark project, although I understand from Mr. Pearson, any further discussion on this is moot because I understand from him that the present development has been withdrawn and there'll be some new things coming. But nonetheless, there are some concerns that we have and I think they're still relevant, generally speaking, to whatever goes into that particular space. I'll also apologize because your copies do not have signatures. June Holly was to sign, but she's out of town today. And I tried to sign, I put my sig, started putting my signature on the copy that I gave to Melissa, but I mashed my thumb yesterday. And I can barely write and it looked so bad, I decided I wouldn't even try.
You think it was a forged signature?
You'll have to take it as an official copy nonetheless. Our concerns are two, and this goes with anything that goes in that area.
Well, I think that's what the other one, that was too.
And the, the one is, of course, the whole question of traffic and parking. The minute you put a large number of people in a small area, you have concerns about parking. Now, even though I was on council at the time, we initiated enforcement of one parking spot per bedroom. I think for certain developments, that probably is a little bit of overkill and that's something the city council can wrestle with and the planning commission can wrestle with. But that's one concern for whatever goes in there. The second concern is the whole question of scale and density. I believe, and most of you have heard me say this before, I believe that density is something that's always relevant to the particular location. There's no hard and fast rule on density. For example, if you take University Commons and don't include their parking, they are much more dense than you would look at just by taking the number of people there divided by the total acres. But parking takes up a lot of space and fills a lot of space with asphalt. So I'm not too sure that any specific number is appropriate, but this is one of our concerns for that particular project and hope that any future project will be a little bit more human scaled. So you have our letter, you have our comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Put this in our file of that area. Density questions? Okay, uh, we don't have any minutes, so we, so we don't have to dispose of them.
Oh, Steve or something.
Yeah, um, I'd just like to make a comment on what Mr. Baum had just mentioned. Um, it's, I have not received a request from Edwards Communities to, to withdraw, um, from their project. Um, however, I did receive, um, a phone call from Mr. Brent Hayes yesterday afternoon. And he asked that, um, he and his partner at this development site, Les Cornwell, be placed on. asked that he and his partner at this development site, Les Cornwell, be placed on the June 1st agenda for the Planning Commission for a pre-application meeting. So I don't know if they want to run two projects simultaneously, or if there'll be an... If there will actually be an announcement that Edwards Communities is not pursuing it any further. I hadn't... I answered Mr. Baum's question when he asked me about the letter, and I guess officially it's in writing that as of yesterday, and then I emailed Melissa and said, "Could... At Mr. Hayes' request, could they be put on for a pre-application meeting on June the 1st?" So that's all the information that I have right now.
Very interesting.
Okay.
Before you adjourn, I want... Just want to tell you, I won't be here June 1st.
Is anybody else not going to be here June 1st?
I don't know.
Okay. One other thing, this is this plan here, which Melissa's caught off the press that we have. It is not the appendix, and we need to look through it to see, but that's what this is.
That's part one?
Two, one and two. Isn't that one and two?
Oh, okay.
It's the total plus the appendix.
It's less the appendix. It's what... Remember, we divided it. We decided it would be a lot easier and user-friendly if we divided it up by the plan and then the implementation suggestions, and then with that, with all the comments and all the input that we received in the appendix. And then the appendix has to be put in order, but it is... This is the actual part of it. It does refer in here, it will say, it's something, if you were on that committee and you see it, will refer to the appendix one or two where all that stuff was. Yes, sir?
When will copies of this be available for general review?
I don't know.
We haven't proofed the corrections yet, have we?
No, I just saw this on the view.
Well, we've gone through one proofing.
Well...
Yeah, but then what we gave back to Melissa for changes...
Right. She's taken your corrections, and we've now got that done.
This is pretty much to see that it's all the way we want it, because she's got it very nicely divided up and very pretty and a detailed table of content. Nope. We sort of got rid of this picture. They're still around, but in this, and it's a very detailed table of contents, and I think the people who pick it up and read it will find it much easier to...
So when?
To follow.
So to answer Ed's question.
I don't know. We have to look at it. When are we going to look at it?
Well, we're not, I guess. Well, do you and Peg want to look at it before? I don't know when you're...
I can look at it over this weekend, but I'm leaving on Tuesday.
I just don't want to linger very long.
No. I mean, I can look at it anytime, and she can look at it. I don't know.
No, we need to put in the page references.
Well, but see, it really won't work that way. What I put in here, now, what I did when I took that out, what I said was, C appendix like this, I just opened this up to this, C appendix 2D1. Now, and I didn't have... I didn't have page numbers, but if we even take that out where it says C page, whatever it is, there is an... There will be a table of contents. All you have to do is look at 2D1. You don't have to have like page 25. It can be... I mean, you can figure that out because the table of contents will say all those things are in there. And at the time when we did that, there was no way to know what the page number is, but it's very clear that what section you go to and what number you go to, because I didn't change any of the numbers in the appendix. All I did was give it each of those section a title that matched the title in the first mark, sort of. Well, she's going to be gone Tuesday. We all have to look at it before then and give it back if there are any changes, and if not, it can go this way. Is that what you're... Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, if you want me to look at it again, I can give it to somebody on Monday, and that's it.
Do you want to look at it again? I mean, if you want me to look at it again.
Peg and I are going to go on strike if we have to look at it too many more times.
Well, it's getting hard to look at.
I can... I'll take it this weekend if you... I mean, I'll take it today, and who wants it on Monday?
Okay, he doesn't want it. He doesn't want it. Really don't.
I can take it on Monday.
I can give it to you, or I can take a look at it and call you if I find anything.
Or you haven't been through it as many times, but don't you look at it?
Yeah, so he really should read it. You should really read it again, because we've kind of looked at it as many times.
Sprint along.
Well, you remember, we tried to do it the way we had worked on the zoning code by dividing up sections, each taking one to go through it, and it just didn't work that way because you couldn't fit what you were doing with what the other sections had done, and so that's why we sort of took it to pieces and put it back in a different order in order to make it possible to follow it.
Yeah, okay.
Representatives from the neighborhood associations are planning to come and talk to the Planning and Development Committee of Council on Monday, because during the comprehensive plan steering committee process, there was a discussion about ongoing performance measurement and, you know, monitoring of progress on the plan, and they want to talk about their role in that. It would be wonderful if you are at the point of just, you know, looking through to make sure your changes are in there whenever it's available, that we could burn some discs or get it up on the website. I know that folks in the neighborhood associations are waiting with great interest and anticipation to see, you know, how it's been reorganized and all of that. So I'd be... I would love to be able to give them a report of, you know... It sounds like you've made most of your substantive changes, and this is kind of a final proof read. So if we could even do, you know, a disc that is just, you know, current draft, so that we could let folks take that and look at it, I think they would be thrilled to be able to feel like things are moving along.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know. I would tend to say... I would tend to say that's about a month premature, but because... Well, I'd really rather...
Look at it again.
Finish, look at it again, make sure that the changes hung together, because some of them were places where, as you copy something and cut and paste, you leave out words or sentences or something, and just to make sure that we've really got it the way we want to present it. And so that the mayor has a chance to write his message of transmittal.
Probably not, Peg.
Well, I think Harry should look at it too.
Well, yeah. Yeah, because you were away most of the time, and we're working on it, so you haven't had a chance really to see it. I guess I would say that the neighborhood associations, I would reassure them that we really haven't made substantive changes in the body of it, in the material it's covered and what it says. It's the way that it's organized so that it's easier to use in the planning process. And there are the... What was it, the last two sections, I think, H and I or H and I and J or some? Have the same recommendations about setting up a mechanism to set up the benchmarks and setting up a mechanism to periodically review the progress on meeting the benchmarks and so on.
But it doesn't set them up, that's...
But it doesn't. It doesn't set them up, except for the, for instance, ones that they included in the plan. We haven't really changed those much, but those really all need to be reviewed and refined because some of them are pretty broad.
Right. And then I was thinking that when we get to that point, it probably makes sense for the Planning Commission and members of the Planning and Development Committee to have a joint work session and think through how that process is going to work, because it seems like there's a strong... There should be a strong connection with the Planning Commission, but there's a recommendation for broader citizen participation in that process as well.
That's probably where it needs to be put on discs so that... Because they're easy to copy, and then people can have their own and read through it at leisure, rather than trying to sit first in a committee and see it for the first time as a thing that thick.
Right.
So that people could come in with their own questions about specific sections and so on. But I agree with you that council and the Planning Commission and the people on the task force need to have a good working relationship with it and need to have a pretty close familiarity with it.
Is the table of contents pretty well set, as we've revised it? Because even that, as a couple-page document, would really say, "This is how we've laid it all out." And if they would look at that and see, just be able to see, oh, yes, they are still talking about that, they're still talking, you know, those sections are still there. In other words, I think that's the reassurance the neighborhood associations and council want. So we're talking about more minute detail of making sure that it all hangs together, but I think the table of contents would give people a pretty good idea of, "This is the way we've laid it out. This is the way you can work through it and see where these appendix are." And at least, you know, we can make a couple copies of that for Debbie and Ed and such, and have them look at it over, and then they can decide whether... Debbie can decide whether or not she wants to use that Monday night. I think we can have a copy down here. Steve, is this... Have you... Everything else in your computer? Have you got more than... This is the only copy, right?
That is the only copy right now.
Right.
The maps would not transfer for...
Yeah, you can't transfer.
The maps...
They screw up all the page numbers, because I can't just do them.
Yeah.
Because the page numbers are on the maps. It's all in my computer, but it's... It does not have the correct page numbers on it. I have to just take page numbers off if I'm going to do it that way. But the maps won't transfer. I have to find another way to do that. The table of contents, is there one table of contents that includes both part one and part two? They're listed, part one and part two in my computer.
It says table of contents, and it starts out with one, the comprehensive plan, and it's all done, and you keep going here, and then it says, "Part two, Athens Implementation Potential Strategies," and then it's listed with the page number. Well, I mean, I can make copies of those to give to people, and I can show up with her.
I can email those to somebody.
Somebody, those that show what they are.
Those are in my computers, complete documents.
And it goes in, I mean, it tells pretty detailed...
The page numbers are referenced is really what was in the original, or what the new page is.
Well, Melissa, if you could send those to me and to Debbie Walker, that would be very helpful.
I think you'll see, if they look at... You're right, if they see, you'll see that it's actually what it is.
They see the table, they really get an idea of what all is in there, and I think that's, at the level we're at right now, that people just want to say, "Have they modified it a whole lot?" By looking at that, I think they will see where our direction is.
Well, one of the things we did to the table of contents was to put a whole lot more detail in it than we had had before, and so it's more an outline.
If I may have a quick moment here. I think the concern of the neighborhood associations right now is not specifically the organization of the document, but the question of what happens after the document is finally approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, because the section there that talks for collaboration and monitoring, how you go about setting up the... And I think they have a fancy name, I can't remember what it's like, Monitoring Review Board or Evaluation Board. There's a word "board" in there, and I thought that was rather strange, but I didn't write it. But question, how does the community remain involved in the process? How does the community know that in fact we're making progress on some of the benchmarks or something else? So some mechanism for reviewing. I don't think they're concerned at the meeting on Monday night with the specifics. They'll wait for those. But the question of, how do we go about... How does council go about, how's the Planning Commission go about continuing a review, a rolling review, an iterative review that has some kind of accountability with the report maybe every year or every six months or whatever?
That's more detailed than what was in the plan about it. And we haven't added detail to that, but we haven't removed the recommendations that were in the plan, so that's in the last couple of sections of implementation. And I think people can see that from the table of contents too. But it may be helpful, especially for people in the task force who have their own copies of the plan, to see the way that we've changed the topics around and see how they hitch together in the two parts, because part one and part two didn't really speak to each other. And now we've tried to make common references so that people be able to move back and forth.
The city council should consider how best to a point or otherwise assign the responsibility of developing and refining administrative...
So we're out of there.
Well, the problem is, if you go through this and you see how many committees and groups and boards that are recommended, I mean, you're going to have to have this wall covered with the schedule of all the things.
Well, the problem is, they have to report to somebody.
I move adjourned.
It's a new city planner, yeah. He moved to adjourn.
Yep.
Okay. It's three... Does that say 3:30?
3:35.
See, I've got my head down on the desk and looks funny when I do that.